I'm giving you, you're on mute, Bill.
Hi Katie. How you doing?
Doing alright.
Everybody's lost, everybody's on markers over there right now.
Over where?
Well, over there, on the email. They're writing about the curb issue, Carmine is.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Here today.
Yeah. So.
What was?
There's Bruce.
Yeah, Bruce is here. What was the response after you said it?
I'll forward it to you. I'm gonna forward it to you.
Thank you.
As soon as I find it. Oh wait, maybe it wasn't a response. My bad. No, it wasn't. I thought it was. It isn't.
Hey Bruce.
Hi Bruce.
Good evening. I gotta get my act together here.
You're getting sucked into the forest below.
Yeah, I've got got all kinds of crazy stuff going on. How about that? That's a little better.
Yeah.
In the right way. There you go. This is safe.
I love that you do that.
Any idea on this first hearing, how long that's gonna run?
I can't imagine it taking very long.
No, I wouldn't think so. Kinda straightforward.
Alright, so since I'm set up, I'm gonna disappear and hang out in the background until you come calling for me.
Okay.
Aren't these meetings exciting? Don't you like to hang out with the planners?
I totally do, and I'll be hanging out, but you don't need to see me the whole time. And you don't need me rustling papers and making noise, so.
Alright, alright.
I'm gonna try to inhale my dinner too, so.
Oh, that's, that makes sense.
I understand.
Katie, is the staff report in the file also? By the way, I meant to ask you that for these. Or are they just on board docs?
What do you mean in the file?
On the
On the drive? Yeah, they're, they're in the files as well.
Alright, if somebody asks for one, I'm gonna send it to them.
Okay.
Does that mean I get to see the staff report?
Yeah, it's on
Yeah, I sent, yeah, it's on, it's on the, it's on board docs. I sent Kim the link. About the materials a while ago, or like two weeks ago.
Me are two different people. I have no idea. Can you zoom me the link?
Yeah, give me a second.
Well, actually, actually, I'll just CC you on this one if you want. I'm just sending it to somebody else. I can do that if you like.
That'd be awesome. And I'll read that while I'm hanging out. See, when I sent that email earlier and you sent me those other two things and going, oh, that's all there was? And then I talked to Kim and she didn't tell me anything about it either.
Yeah, the staff report is under the board docs link is, oh yeah, cuz I sent you the the two comment emails from earlier today.
Bill, isn't she looking married and everything? Yeah, I better get on silent here before I get myself in trouble.
It's, I've been married exactly one month today.
Hey, congratulations.
Thank you.
And this is how you celebrated on a meeting with us, huh?
I do, yeah, I do enjoy the ZBA, so. ZBA, co-ops, two things I like, so.
Alright, I'm gonna sign off, I'll hang out in the background and I'll look for that email. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a first part of the meeting.
You know what, Katie? I have never used my iPad here for board docs. I don't think. We'll see here. There we go. Well, that was easy enough.
When did you end up leaving town hall? Bill.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, when did you end up leaving town hall?
I just got home this minute.
Goodness me.
Well, I was trying to finish this, that
Town meeting stuff.
The town meeting stuff. The only thing, the Keene, I need your help on the Keene Avenue tomorrow.
Okay.
That was a little bit, and I did all the maps cuz they, maps have to be tagged and everything, you know? And, let's see. The map, so I put tags on all the maps and I, you know, we had the we had the, what do you call it? Graphics that, I had to make a new zoning map that showed where it's gonna, you know, where it's gonna be.
Oh, like a zoomed out more map?
Yeah, yeah, I'm almost done with that. And I did it with a I also did it with the, the water supply map. So made it like a oh, let's see, who we have on here? Oh, now I'm getting everybody popping in. Hey Marilyn, Marilyn's here, I see.
Paige is coming on.
Well, okay.
Here's Paul.
Hey Paige. How are you?
Hey Malcolm, how are you?
Couldn't be better.
Oh, glad to hear that. Glad I could hear you. I was having some audio issues today.
Oh no.
I just needed my headphones.
And, oopsie, we'll do that. I've got I've got two screens going now, so let's see, I think I I hope I don't blow it up. See Dennis, James, and Paul's on it. Paul, are you on? Oh, there's
He's here. I just don't think he's not connected. Yeah, there we go.
Alright. Oh, there he is. No, but it's not Paul. Well, he's, I see his name anyway. I got his name. Nope, can you hear him? I can hear you, Paul.
Good.
I do not see you, though.
That's cuz my computer is closed right now.
Uh-huh. Let's see if the beard is down like Rasputin yet.
Yeah. No, I, I have five computer monitors here, and if I open up my computer to look at that one with the camera, I go nuts, and it confuses the poor mouse.
I could appreciate that. Hey, John.
You're on mute.
Hi guys, it's Marilyn. Can you hear me?
Hi Marilyn.
Hi.
Hi John.
Leslie.
Hey Bill, hey everybody.
And Seth, Seth McFarlane, okay? Hi Leslie. I've been, I've emailed you Seth, but I've never seen you, so.
I, it was Seth. It's Steve, actually. Seth is, I'm sure, a distant, very, very rich cousin of mine, but
Oh, okay. Oh, that's why we haven't met. Is that Jim?
It looks like Jim. It's Jim Coleman. Wow.
I think.
Yep, that's him.
Hey Jim.
Here's Rob. Hi Rob.
Jim, you're getting warmed up for tomorrow night, Jim? Oh, you're muted. Or Jim is gonna be stuck with us two nights in a row, Katie.
No. Poor guy. People are still kinda
Tricky, oh, here's Jerry. Alright, so now I think we have one. Hey Jerry.
Hey Bill, how you doing?
That looks miserable where you're at.
Well, actually, I'm in, I'm in Maynard. I just use a more friendly background.
More friendly. What's more friendly than Maynard?
Yeah, you don't wanna question.
I like the palm trees.
Okay, so we have one, hey John. Let's see, so we have Marilyn, we have Jerry, we have Paul, we have Leslie, we have Paige, and we have John. We have everybody, I think. Yep. Paul, we have everybody whenever you're ready.
So. I guess, I guess we'll get started then, right?
I think.
My computer says Seth, so you got your recorder running?
I think we do.
Good. So, let me just read the announcement that we're holding a public hearing. It'll be a remote public hearing by Zoom on Monday 26th October 2020. 7:00 PM to hear all persons interested in the petition filed by Stephen McFarlane, 100 Great Road, Maynard. The subject property, 100 Great Road, is located within the general residence district and is a non-conforming structure, consistent with 531 of the zoning bylaws. The petitioner is requesting a special permit to extend the existing non-conforming building for the purpose of constructing in addition to the property. So, I think we start next with the petitioner. He will tell us why he needs this special permit, and then us members on the board will ask questions, and then the general public will ask questions of us to, you know, understand more about what's happening. And then we'll deliberate. So, the petitioner, Mr. McFarlane.
Yes, hi, hi everybody. Thank you very much for I was gonna say for joining me on this call, but this is your call that I'm joining. I've never put a petition, I'm sorry, I've never worked with the zoning board, the zoning board of appeals. I have been in this house, so this is my first time through the process, but yeah, I've been in this house since 2005. And it's a, it's a, it's a small place built in 1911. Yeah, very, very close, nine feet, eight, eight points, eight feet, six inches from the property line. And I've sort of been wanting to put an addition on for, for a while, and really what the addition was gonna be would be a mudroom. But eight by 10 mudroom off the back. And when we had first drawn these up, the, it was, it's because of the way the house is sort of angled. It was, it was actually gonna, the addition was encroached by a couple inches towards the property line, so I'd worked with Caitlin, based on her guidance, I had the architect redraw that and we drew it back another two inches so that it was gonna stay within the existing non-conformity. So the total addition's gonna be this, this eight by 10 mudroom, which is gonna become the main entrance into the backyard. And what this is gonna allow us to do is, is open up our kitchen a little bit. Right now, the kitchen has five entryways into it, which makes it almost impossible to move around when you've got guests. And then it's also gonna give us the opportunity to put a half bath. Right now, I've got one bath in the, in the place, it's on the second floor, and and a teenage daughter who enjoys 45-minute showers, so this, this is gonna give me a little bit of relief and certainly having guests as well, so that's basically the premise of it, is to put this addition on the back. And then, and then a small deck off that as well. Is there any, anything else that, that you need?
Well, I'm just trying to think this through here. The the, the approval of a special permit requires us to find certain things, trying to find my notes on what I need to do, what we need to do.
Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I can go through that right now. Everyone, it should be in section three of the staff report. Do you want me to go through those items, or do you help find this?
I can't find the staff report.
The staff report was sent last week via email. It's also in the board docs link. If you enter into the page, into the agenda, go down to the second public hearing item, and then click under, on staff report under that. If not, if you can't find it, I can share the screen as well.
Like special permits, 10.4 shall be granted only upon determination that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh the benefits, and then also that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood and that, that stuff, right?
Sounds good.
Well, I just sent you, I emailed you a copy of the staff report also, just now.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you very much. I don't remember reading this. Oh, the co-op. Yeah, but we're not lucky talking to co-op.
Oh, okay.
You may have sent the
Send you the other one too. My bad. Katie, what, I'm sorry, what is the address? This is the
100 Great Road.
100, right, okay.
Yeah.
Is that where it is? It's under 100, okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'll send it right to Paul right now.
And I've
The whole board, in case the board needs it, I mean
It's on the screen.
Yeah, I've got it up here as well.
Alright. Slow on the draw.
Does everyone else have the staff report?
I have it. I have it.
Yep.
But it's, but it's easier to see on the screen, so.
Yeah, but we can, can
That's interesting.
Nah, I can
Okay, so anyway. I don't have that staff report.
I just, I just resend it again to you, Paul. Let's see. You should have it any second.
If you're not on your screen, Paul, I can read it if you want. It's Marilyn.
Yeah, I just got it. Thank you.
Okay.
And the issue that we have to find here is section 513, special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, change, and non-conforming structure within the section, only if such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. Okay. So that's what we have to find. And in, in the submitted documents if I can find them again.
We also have to find that it, it's, we have to consider the social economic community needs, the traffic flow, the adequacy of utilities, all of that as well, under section 10.4? Or is that, yes?
Yes, you're correct. On the, I think it's the second or third page of the staff report. It lists out both the special permit considerations and the required actions.
Yeah.
Alright, so for us to move forward on this, we need to reflect, as, as the folks are saying, on these six items. Social economic community needs which are served, traffic flow, not being impacted. Utilities are okay, neighborhood character, natural environment, and fiscal impact, including impact on town services and so on. So my understanding then, from the petitioner, is he simply wants to expand his kitchen and put a deck out back. Is that generally accurate?
It's not a, I'm, I'm, sorry, am I on mute? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, so there's a, I don't the, the deck is, sorry, the, it's gonna be a mudroom that'll be going off of the, what's currently my, my dining room. So I'm gonna have French doors open up in this mudroom, and then, and then out onto the, out onto the deck. What that's gonna allow me to do is, not only to have that be sort of the signature, you know, the room of the house, but that's gonna be, I've got two entryways. I have one entryway that's, that's facing 117, which is on the opposite end of the house. And this would be the access through the backyard. Right now, the access through the backyard just comes in through the kitchen, like all of a sudden somebody opens a door and they're like boom, in your, in your kitchen. And so what this is gonna allow us to do is not only have that, that extra space to, you know, kinda spend time in the mudroom or out on the, out on the back porch, but it's going to allow me to, to move things around in my, in my, in a different room, which is the kitchen, and, and have all the appliances face the backyard. And it really just give us a, you know, a lot more room to, 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 to move around back there, so. It's a, it's, they won't impact traffic flow. It's on, like I said, it's on the other, completely on the other side of the house, and yeah, the only thing that we would be doing it, it would be adding a, adding a half bathroom.
Okay, on the, the map that you're showing there, the plan, up in the corner, it says maximum lot coverage required and of the property, 19% maximum lot coverage. I assume that means with the building as it exists now, but not with the additional structure. Is that the way I read that?
Which page are you looking at, sir?
Same page you got showing on the screen right now.
So, if I may, I think it's, it's saying that the, you know, required, the max lot coverage is 40%. So that's what the, yeah, that's what's allowed by the bylaws, and he's proposing that 19% is going to be the new lot coverage.
Alright, is that new or is that existing?
That is proposed, so it would be once this were approved and built.
Yeah.
So what is it before this deck and mudroom go on?
Give me one second. Currently, it's a roughly, I calculated, it's roughly 16%.
Ah, thank you.
No problem.
And I, I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier when I said that the deck was eight, eight, eight by 10. I was, I'm sorry, the addition was eight by 10. It's a, eight, yeah, 8.3 by, by 14 feet. Would be the mudroom.
So I have a question. It's Marilyn. So that means, so it's not any more non-conforming than it was, right? It's still within the coverage?
Yeah, Marilyn, that's, that's correct. Originally, when I had it drawn up, it, just because you can see how the property line, the house just, it just, it converges towards the fences. You get deeper into the, into the property line, so when I first brought this, that was Bill and, and Katie had pointed that out, and so we, I went back and we redrew this so that it's, it stays within eight, eight, eight feet, six inches.
Okay, thank you. So the coverage is good, and, and the setbacks are still okay? We're not issuing a variance, so I guess they are.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And on the neighbor's property where you have the setback issue, an eight-foot setback, does he have any structures there?
No, no, that's all, that whole space, yeah, where, where the, the mouse is, is, that's all. That's all the yard, and I think he's got a he's got, out towards the back of the property, like the northernmost part of the property. He does have a garage, but that's probably gosh, I wanna say like maybe 50 feet away from, from my, my fence, so there's, yeah, there's no structures there.
Okay. So is there, is there anybody on the call, on the virtual meeting here, that wants to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anybody on the call that wants to speak in opposition to the petitioner?
Hello? This is Michelle House.
Hey Michelle.
How are you? I just wanted to say, Joe and I live next door to Steve, and he's great, and we're all in
Support of him.
Support of him.
We live right here. We're in 3SPO, in Steve's backyard.
Okay.
It looks like Peter and Brenda are on too, but they're having trouble with their mics. That's the, the neighbors to the east.
Alright. Do any other board members have any questions?
Can I just comment that I've, there's some, there's some stuff going back and forth in, in the chat. Yeah, it says, Peter and Brenda Luciano, 102 Great Road, having problems with microphone. We are in support of Steve's project. And they said they're on the phone also if I can unmute them. But I'm not sure, I, I can't unmute them. I think I can request it to unmute, but it's a little tricky with the phone, so let me see what I can do.
Oh, we can see the messages.
Yeah, I saw the message.
Okay.
That's, we're good, I think. Thank you. That's, we're good, I think. Thank you.
Okay. So board members, shall we deliberate? If you had more questions, are we all set with questions?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sounds good.
I'll second.
Call of labor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. So board members, are, we're still in the general room though, right? Everybody can hear us.
Yes.
But just as we talk amongst ourselves here, is there any further discussion? What's our sense, what we plan on doing here?
I don't see any issue with it. I mean, it's not any more nonconforming than it was. And, you know, it doesn't have any of the impact on the social or the economic or the utilities or the character or any of that stuff. It's just gonna make the house more livable.
Well, Marilyn, I don't see any impact to traffic or anything, so I'm good with it.
I don't either, yeah.
I'm good with it. Cut those showers down.
Your water bill will do that.
All right, so I need a motion then, if we're gonna close this out.
I can make it, I think. Okay, I make a motion to grant the special permit to extend the legally nonconforming structure and allow construction of a single-story addition and deck at 100 Great Road, Maynard. The addition will maintain existing nonconformity of the side yard setback, but not increase any other nonconformities. The proposed addition and deck will not substantially, will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. The adverse effects do not outweigh its beneficial impact on the community, including social, economic, or community needs, traffic flow, adequacy of utilities or other public services, neighborhood character, natural environment, fiscal impact on the town. It is consistent with the special permit criteria as listed in section two.
I'll second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? No discussion? Let's take a roll call vote. Marilyn?
Yeah, okay, yeah, we're good.
Leslie?
Yep.
John?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And this is Paul, and I say yes as well. So I think the issue then, Caitlin, you need to describe to them what the next steps are.
One second. So you made the determination, so you mean the next step as in terms of the, the special permit itself, or?
Yeah, when they could put up their building and getting paperwork back and forth from the town and so on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be in touch, Steve. We'll contact by email tomorrow. There will be an appeal period, and we'll try to get the decision written. You know, it's a pretty, pretty small one, so we should be able to get it, you know, by the end of the week, early next week, and get it on the books with the clerk, so. We'll be in contact.
Awesome, thank you so much. How, how long is the appeal period?
20 days, right, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know we've got, yeah, the only reason why I ask is, you know, winter's, winter is coming, so. No, this is great. Thank you very much. And Caitlin and Bill, thank you so much for your help. And, you know, like I said, this is my first project on the house, so I was probably fumbling through the process. Caitlin recognized that I was a lost soul with this and
You were not lost.
gave me some guidance on, you know, how to, how to get this into something that we could, you know, would be, whatever, wouldn't exacerbate the existing nonconformity. So thank you very much for that. And yeah, I know we'll be, we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Yeah, and my apologies for calling you Seth.
Bill, I get that all the time. All the time. And I wish, I wish there was like a last name royalty that I could get. It'd work that way. All right, is, is anything else, anything else the board needs from me?
I think.
All right, all right, thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's time.
All right, the next item we have is a public hearing on 2 to 6 Powder Mill Road, Aspet Co-op Special Permit Request. And the announcement is that the zoning board of appeals will hold a remote public hearing by Zoom on Monday, 26 October, to hear all persons interested in the petition filed by the Aspet Co-op Market, 54 Main Street, Suite 205 Maynard. The subject property is 2 through 6 Powder Mill Road, located within a business district and is a nonconforming structure. Consistent with 513 of the Maynard zoning bylaws, petitioner is requesting a special permit to reconstruct the existing nonconforming building and parking area for the purpose of constructing a retail market. So again, as we did with the previous case, the petitioner, please.
Oh, wait, 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 Paul. Because I'm an investor, I've asked to be recused.
Okay. So you don't want to hear this?
Oh, I didn't say I didn't want to hear it. I don't want to participate. I'm gonna hear it.
I asked Bill, because I'm also an investor owner, and he said check with legal, it's okay to, to listen to it and vote on it.
You're a member. I'm an investor. That's a big difference.
I've got shares.
Do you?
Yep.
I think all members get shares. That's how a co-op works.
No, no, being an investor is different, I believe.
To be clear, if anybody's uncomfortable, all I do is file a disclosure, and we can send it to you, and it's just so it's on the record. We had, as you can imagine, we had a problem trying to get people who weren't members, but we, we did vet this through, through legal and should, no issue. Leslie's situation, I'm a little unfamiliar with, so they recommended that, you know, she's, and we have an alternate with Paige, so.
Okay.
Are you ready for me?
Yeah, I think we're all set, so.
All right, good evening. My name is Bruce Ringwall from Goldsmith Preston Ringwall, and I'm representing the Aspet Co-op Market application. If I may share my screen.
You should be allowed to. It should, you should have permission to do it.
All right. On the screen here, you'll see, and I'm gonna zoom in a little bit, so get the site right up and present. First off, the property, as you know, is located at 2 to 6 Powder Mill Road, at the intersection of Waltham and Powder Mill Road. This is the site of the most recent suburban glass and mirror property. The building, it exists today, is gray in the background. It's this horseshoe-shaped building that sits underneath here. And the building that's proposed on the site is this red building in the center. The current building is about 11,150 square feet, and our proposal is to take down the front wings of this. We'll take down the whole building, but to hold on to the, the left-hand side, which would be the, I forgot, I lost my North Air here. Yeah, the kind of the southwest side of the property, and the rear setback as well for the building. The current building sticks out past the right-of-way, past the property line into the right-of-way, and has another portion that's just back of it. And in the back of the building, we have a portion that's 11 feet right now to the back lot line, and we propose to remove that portion, but our new back lot line, our back building would be 12 feet off at the closest corner to the rear property line. The building itself will, you know, meet the front yard setbacks, which is a 30-foot setback. Our building itself will be at 50 feet, and there'll be a canopy overhang over a sidewalk, and the entry to the building, it'll be at about 45 feet from the setback. So all those meet the required setbacks. And our right side more than meets the 15-foot setback to the property line on the, on the right side. Also, to be discussed this evening is a matter of coverage. The lot coverage of the building right now is at about, I gotta cheat and look at my, my notes, but the, the lot coverage of the building right now is, I'm gonna look at the top portion here, because I've lost it. We're at a 46% coverage, where the building is allowed to be up to 35% coverage. And with our proposal, we'll be at 31% coverage, so we'll be making a better conformity situation as far as building coverage on the site. And then the other thing is, is open space. The current open space at the site right now is about 12%. And we're not gonna be increasing that by a lot, but we will be creating some open space in the front. Some landscaped area across the front here, around the parking, and on either sides of the proposed drive entrance, as well as across the back, which will be enhancing the area across the back. So we'll be increasing that from 12 to 14%. So we are holding with the, the existing building to the, to the sideline setback here. And if you can see in the background behind my thumbnail sketch of myself speaking here, there is a, an aerial view of the site, and shows the building and how it covers the whole portion of the site. That's pretty much the presentation in a nutshell. I also have the site plan that was submitted as well, so that you get an idea of, of the layout of the site. Again, grade back is the existing horseshoe building, and then the proposed building in the front. And I'll go back to our site, and I turn it over to the board for any questions.
Have you gone through a traffic study for the amount of people coming and going versus Powder Mill Road, which is a pretty busy street?
We've had a preliminary traffic study done, and then we have set up for the next phase. And we've submitted that to the town so that they can start looking into that for a review. And the traffic study will be a very integral part of the special permit application before the planning board. This section that we're doing right now, as you're well aware, is just looking into the, the zoning issues relative to setbacks and coverage, so that that step is addressed when we go before the planning board for their full site plan special permit review.
Bruce, this is Paige speaking. I just had a quick question about some of the site constraints. I was wondering if, if there was any consideration, since this is going to be a new building, to pulling the building a little bit more towards the center to increase that side setback, or if other constraints, such as trying to meet parking requirements or things like that, help dictate the placement of the building.
Yeah, as you're well aware, the site right now is, is fully disturbed with the building, and they have a gravel parking lot that's kind of used as a double load, and it's been used for storage. It's been used for a number of different things on the right-hand side. To meet the zoning requirements for parking, we need to have a double-loaded parking area, and that's what we've established here, as well as we need some parking out front. And when you put the travel lane in to that, as well as the parking requirements, it's, it takes a full piece in here. We're 62 feet from the edge of the parking to the property line. We've already had some discussions. We've been meeting back and forth with, with Katie and Bill and other town officials, with Rich and, and other folks, working through a number of the issues. And so we're gonna be asking for a slight relief in the width of the parking aisle from the planning board, just so we can still make that fit, because there'll be a slight little retaining wall on the other side. So I guess that's the long answer to the short answer of yes, there are a lot of constraints on the site. It is a small site. We're going to be doing a lot to, we believe, make it a better, more pleasing site to the community and to the environment as well.
So you're, you're gonna, this is, this is Paul Shiner again. You're gonna be operating this as a grocery store, right?
As a co-op market, that's correct.
And so you're going to have delivery trucks? Where are the delivery trucks going to be going? And how are they gonna get there?
Well.
Is there a place to turn around or to back into something?
Yes. One of the wonderful things about a, a co-op versus a, a large supermarket chain is that they have specified vendors, and those vendors work with them to help to make deliveries in off-hours, such as, you know, not during the, the day of traffic time, but early morning or, or past the rush hour time in the evening. We have done a layout that the trucks can come on in, and they can pull into here and then back on down for unloading. There'll be an unloading area in the back, back here, and then they'll be able to pull on out and leave. So we're working through all that. That'll be part of the traffic study and part of the site plan review with the planning board. But definitely is an issue that we're very conscious of and taking a close look at.
And then the, the other piece of that is, one of your plan maps here shows a dumpster. And how do you access the dumpster without trespassing?
Well, that's a good question. The dumpster proposal is back over here on the rear left corner. And there is an existing 10-foot-wide right-of-way that is, provides access from Waltham Street to this site. And we would propose to, to use that, sir.
But if that right-of-way is approximately after it, it's missing the dumpster, it's running into your building.
Yes, it is, it's, it's, the location of that right-of-way is off of a very old survey plan. And as you can see, it goes across part of the building on that adjacent property right now. And then there would be discussions with the abutter for access, to use, access similar to how it's used now, where there is an access into the back portion of the building along that side through there. So there'll be discussions for that.
Board members, any, any questions? I sort of took quite a few myself, so any questions you guys might have?
I have a question about the, the parking and so forth. So are you gonna be asking the planning board for relief on that? You mentioned something about the, the width of, is it a turning aisle, or? What are you asking them for?
First off, I, I can't see who I'm speaking to.
Oh, it's Marilyn. How you doing?
The, we are, we will be asking for a relief on a, a number of small items from the planning board. Parking, as far as a setback, and the aisle width. Instead of a 22-foot-wide aisle, or 24-foot-wide aisle, I think, I think instead of a 24, we're going to a 22-foot-wide aisle, if memory serves me correctly.
Okay. But you're gonna have the required number of spaces?
We are.
Thank you.
Yeah, Paul, Jerry here. My only question is, and I reviewed these documents a couple of days ago, is more dealing with the traffic study. I see that as a potential problem. I don't know if we can put a hold on that portion until things go before the planning board. I don't know which way that process moves.
Yeah. I tend to agree with you, because we need to find that traffic flow and safety and parking and loading are not impacted by the special permit. And it sounds like we might have an issue.
So I don't know where Bill and Katie sit on that. My thinking on that is, I've read through your bylaws many times, is that your bylaws address special permit and the section that you're all referring to in the ten-point-four guidelines for responding to a special permit. The special permits that we're asking for this evening are relative to the setbacks whereby the special permit for the actual site plan and the use of the property will be before the planning board. And I think it'd be more pertinent on the traffic and some of those other issues relative to the planning board's decision. But, you know, Bill and Katie, you got a better handle on that than I.
That's my understanding as well, is that we're looking really at, as Bruce said, you know, the setbacks of the building itself and being able to rebuild the structure in the same setback as, you know, so it's not creating more of an issue. Because, you know, once it gets to the planning board and, well, Conservation Commission for Environmental Issues, but once it gets to the planning board, they'll go through and ensure that, you know, the parking and onsite circulation and queuing out onto Powder Mill Road and whatnot are, you know, correct for the site and aren't going to create a safety hazard per se.
We're at a situation where we have a number of permits. We have the Zoning Board of Appeals for this issue. We have the planning board for the full site plan, and we have conservation relative to floodplain and wetlands protection and riverfront. And this is a key piece in the puzzle, so that we know that the ZBA is either on board with this special permit or not, so that we can go through the balance of the engineering and studies that are necessary to bring this application before the Conservation Commission and the planning board.
Mr. Chair, this is Bill Nemser. May I speak a moment?
Go ahead.
Yeah, that was one point I wanted to bring up. And part of this is determining the next steps for the applicants in preparing the plan. So I think that the crux of this is that if this doesn't go, they, you know, they wouldn't go forward with the plan, or they would be hesitant to. So that was kind of the thinking with that. But in essence, in this case, we're simply looking at the reconstruction of a legal non-conformity, regardless, you know, that's basically where this is.
So then I got a little bit confused here, because the petition from these folks was asking for a special permit to reconstruct an existing non-conforming building and parking area for the purpose of constructing a retail market. And then looking through Section 10, when it says requirements for a special permit, it sounds like we have to consider those. We did-
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm looking at that too, Paul. It clearly states that that's part of determining whether it's, you know, more detrimental than what's already there. And so, you know, it's always a chicken and an egg, and we're not trying to hold anything up, but we can do things, you know, concurring, you're here, you're going to the planning board. I don't think it would be a bad idea to maybe continue this until we actually know what the planning board signs off on, and then we know whether it's more detrimental or not. Right now, we don't really know what we're signing off on, because we don't know what the whole plan looks like. And I don't really want to get into that. Yeah, I don't do planning board anymore, but, you know, it's all part of it.
I totally agree. And there's definitely that loop of the chicken and the egg, and that was what, you know, we were kind of all rustling with in some of our discussions back and forth with the community. One suggestion I might throw out would be that you would do it with a condition that the planning board finds that after their peer review of the traffic study is done, that the, you know, you're willing to grant these special permits for the maintaining the existing setback and increasing the open space, but not meeting the full open space requirement, conditioned upon the planning board approving the traffic study as part of their special permit.
Right. That's what I was thinking, Ollie. I was thinking the other way, where they would approve it subject to us signing off on it, you know, at the end of the day. Just because that way, we would know what the whole thing looks like. Right now, we really don't know, because we don't know what they're going to approve. I mean, I think the concept is fine. I don't have any issue with, you know, it doesn't look like it's any more non-conforming and all of that, but we don't know what the traffic in the parking is going to look like, and we don't know what the planning board is going to do. So I think they should do it subject to our approval, as opposed to us doing it subject to their approval. That's just my opinion. Up to the chair.
I just want to make sure I understood what you were saying, Marilyn. You're thinking that the planning board should do their review subject to your approval of this special permit?
Right.
Yes, I agree. That's why we're here now, asking for the special permit.
Right. But they haven't done their review yet. The planning board hasn't done their review. So I'm suggesting that you go to them and say the proposal forward and have them look at the traffic studies and the parking and all of that stuff. Come back and say, yeah, this is what we've approved for them. And then we say, okay, hopefully say, okay. You don't like that?
Not really, because it kind of leaves me hanging out here in this position for our clients where, you know, we're moving forward with a bunch of engineering and not knowing that the setback is adequate and is okay in the minds of the zoning board of appeals.
Well, just remember that the special permit has all those other conditions along with it that is no more detrimental. And you've got a parking lot of, I counted about thirty spaces?
Thirty-one, I believe, or thirty-two, yes.
And so conceivably, you could have a parking lot at some point and people coming and going. It could be a rather busy time. And that's a pretty big impact for us to say, sure, you can have a special permit, and that's part of it. You know, the folks at, the Urban Glass people, I very rarely saw somebody coming and going. And now you're talking a retail business with a lot of people coming and going. That's a big impact. And for us to give a special permit means we've considered all that.
Thinking back to how we did Coolidge, could we do something like, we're good with the setbacks, but the special permit is contingent on further review of the traffic flow pending review by the planning board?
That would be very helpful.
That would still be, if I'm correct, if I'm hearing you right, you'd be issuing the permit with the contingency.
The permit would be, well, it would be contingent, I don't know. How would that work, Bill?
It was a continuance last time, I think.
Right, that's what I was suggesting.
Yes.
It was just like the Coolidge, because, and it was very similar. There were a lot of unknowns-
Right.
-with regard to the parking and so forth. So we said, you know, go to them, and then we know what we're signing off on, because, you know, it is part of the criteria.
Right, but for Coolidge, I think we voted and say we were good with the setbacks, but we had to continue on for the density and the traffic.
That's correct. I think in this case, the issue is, there is still a conservation review coming, there's still a planning board, and a traffic study still being formulated with town staff, as well as Bruce. And I think it's going to be going, you know, it's front and center with everybody on the review. And I think that the idea in this instance is that it would just assist the applicant to figure out where the next, what would be the next step for the engineering. And I'm concerned that if we, if it was not, if it does not move forward, that it may impact the ability to conduct the next phase of the study. But I don't want to speak for the applicant, but that's my sense of understanding.
Well, let's pose the hypothetical then. How long would it take to develop a traffic study that we could be comfortable with?
Well, I mean, for the traffic study, it would then have to be reviewed by the town engineer and whatnot, and that is all part of, that's normally part of the planning board, you know, review process. And, you know, they have not submitted yet, so I'm not quite sure how long away that would be per se.
Bruce, what do you think on that?
I agree with what Katie stated. You know, our application to the planning board and to the Conservation Commission, while moving forward, is not ready to submit. And with that is the traffic study. You know, again, a key thing here is, you know, some sort of a vote from the board that, you know, they're okay with the special permits that are being asked of us this evening.
Yeah, and I think the one thing that I would, that make clear is that if the traffic doesn't work at the planning, with the planning board, when it reports it, it's, project's not going to go. I mean, it's, that's the number one concern that, as you can imagine, that the board has been working on. So I don't believe that, you know, you would need to be uncomfortable with the idea that they're going to, they would, either Public Works, Town Engineer, or the board would be willing to go forward with this if the traffic did not work and was not demonstrated to work.
Are you, am I on mute?
No.
Nope, we can hear you. Are you going to take comments from the public tonight?
Love to. We just sort of got hung up on this one item. So if you want to make a suggestion like that, that's good. So let's hear some comments from the public.
Well, I'm just wondering about, has the fire department already weighed in on the site? I have some concerns about if they have to go between the proposed building and the buildings along Waltham Street? Or will they just, you know, if they have to get emergency equipment in, is that, have they already determined that that's something that's not an issue?
So the fire department did receive this, the special permit to the ZBA package, and did not provide any comments or response on the plan thus far.
And I will point out that we're maintaining the same alley width that exists on the, on that alley that you're talking about, but we are making the drive aisle and the access to the site for fire protection and emergency services response much more accessible.
Good.
I assume you'd probably have some fire retardant finishes on that common line, too.
Yeah, that gets above my pay grade. That's into the architecture standpoint, but yes, given the proximity from one building to another, from my years of experience in this business, I know that there is definitely fire retardant issues that have to be addressed when you're in close proximity.
Did I hear at one point that there is going to be some kind of, like, I wanted to say a levee, but that's not it. That's something that is like a flood protection from the river, if the river rises?
Well, we are addressing the floodplain. There is floodplain, obviously, associated with this being right adjacent to the Assavet River, and that'll be part of our application that goes before the Conservation Commission and the, and the planning board. By law, we have to provide the compensatory storage for any area that is filled within the floodplain, and it has to be on an incremental, foot-by-foot incremental. So I, you know, for the sake of argument, if the floodplain was this very big area that I made compensatory storage at a much lower level, but not at the higher level for the higher ends of the storm, it wouldn't be adequate. So we have to do it on a foot-per-foot scenario, and that's something that we're looking very closely at and believe we have a very good solution for. So that'll be all part of the plan as it moves forward.
Okay.
Anybody else wants, from the public that's on the meeting, want to make any comments, pro or con?
Yes, my wife would like to speak in relation to, we're actually the abutter, Thomas and Lynn Herbst, and we are opposed to the site as it exists at this point. And that's in relation to the retainer wall and the fence. So that's something that we'd like to work with. We are actually members of the co-op. And again, we just don't like the idea of the way that the actual, the retainer wall abutting our property, and the height of the retainer wall, there's no information as it regards to, well, there's very little information as regards to site from the side of the retainer wall, because from what I measured, and again, from the plans that I've received, the plans basically show that it's up to a seven-and-a-half-foot wall, up to, and then a six-foot fence on the top of that. And that's with my discussion with Rob. So that, to me, is not doable, and it's concerning. I don't, I would like to poll the board to see if they would want a, up to a thirteen-foot fence and a retainer wall. That's our concern, and we do have some other concerns that we would like to have addressed. And my wife has been a board, has been, her family's been on the co-op for, you know, many, many years, but I'll let her speak. So, okay.
As my husband said, we are members of the co-op. We joined back in two-fifteen, and we did buy into the co-op. We strongly believe in the concept co-op. My great-grandmother and my grandmother both were on the Women's Guild of the co-op in Maynard, when it was both on the corner across from Waltham Street, which is now Murphy and Snyder, or I guess if you're an Old Townie, it's Murphy and Snyder. And then it moved down to Nathan Street, and then it moved down to Main Street. I also have very fond memories of shopping with my dad when it was on Main Street. So we do have rich history in the Maynard co-op. Also, being the abutter to this site, I am the first one to say, I would like to see those buildings torn down. I look out at them every day, and it's not a pretty sight. My issue is, as my husband stated, they want to raise the level of that parking lot. So in order to raise it, they're going to have to put a retainer wall all along the property abutting property line. My house is eight feet, eight feet from that property line. So I'm going to be looking out at this retainer wall with a fence. No privacy. What I was told by one of the members of the co-op, that they would plant ivy on the fence. To me, that's like being in a prison. So I have issues, because the special permit they're asking for is in regards to the yard. The side says the requirement is fifteen feet. Right now, there's a four-plus feet. They propose a four-plus feet. I want to know why the board's not going to make them abide by the fifteen feet.
If I may, that four-plus feet is over on the opposite- If I may, that four-plus feet is over on the, on the opposite side. That's this portion of the building against this setback.
But you're going to put the retainer wall right on the property line that abuts our property.
There would be a retaining wall to hold the parking lot at some point, and I'd be happy to, with the applicant, to review with you and to look at options. Those, to me, are site plan issues and not issues that are relative to what's being asked this evening. But again, I'd be happy to talk with you and the applicant about that.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want everyone to be clear that right now, we're not, the zoning board is not approving whether or not the co-op is going to be built per se. It's more approving the, you know, the setbacks and the dimensional issues. All of that site plan related stuff, such as the retaining wall, you know, landscape, landscape design, that stuff will be in front of the planning board. This is really just to approve of the dimensional setback and coverage pieces.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I, and I am not comfortable with your complete story, because if you're building a seven-foot structure on the property line and calling it a retaining wall, to me, that's a structure and ought to be considered as part of a setback issue as well. Oh, I'm hearing this from, from the, from the neighbors. I would like to know if there's anything else? Does anybody else that wants to offer a comment for or against? In the people that are in attendance here?
I would like, we would like to see more detail as it relates to the building heights and also side, three-dimensional is basically kind of what we're looking for.
Okay.
We understand kind of what we're dealing with here. But again, we're, we would like the, the setback to stay the way that it is and not approve the, the special permit for the zoning as it relates to the, the abutment. But again, the retainer wall is the big problem here.
Also, it is our, it is our understanding with knowledge of that area, because we live next door. We know what is underneath that parking lot. We know what's underneath that building. It's an old riverbed. They're going to have to go down eight feet from my house, 16 feet to put in footings for a retainer wall. And it's going to go from the rib, from the front to bottom of the road, the road, all the way back to the river. And as it goes down towards the river, the retainer wall is going to get higher and higher and higher. And then they want to propose a fence on top of it, so that nobody would come driving into my yard. But there's no privacy.
We understand, we understand your comments and appreciate them. I want to know if there's anybody else that has any comments for or against that's in attendance to this meeting?
Yeah, can you hear me? This is Andy Cool.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, so we're, we're.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Let me unplug here.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
So we, I'm the majority owner of the building at 20 Powder Mill Road, which is on the other side of Tom and his wife. And I've been looking at this project for, well, pretty much since its inception. Obviously, I can't speak to the nuances of, you know, setbacks, et cetera, but I would just say that I'm in favor of this project. Obviously, it needs to support the town bylaws and zoning bylaws, et cetera. So if, if that can be worked out, we're in, in support of the project.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, this is Rob Olney from the co-op board, speaking as the applicant.
Go ahead, speak.
Thank you very much for taking the time to take a look at our application and consider everything involved in the project. It's certainly been a big investment of time and energy for many of us on the co-op. What we're trying to ask for is approval on the deviations, so we know where to locate the actual structure on the property, so that then we can approach the planning board for approval for things like parking and traffic, things like that. We have completed the traffic study and have begun to submit it to the program. And the, we've located, we've located the entrance and exit to the, to the property furthest from the traffic light. And the largest traffic issues are actually on Waltham Street across from the 711, not on the entrance we have designated. But for this purpose, what we really need help from the zoning board is to approve the deviations, so we can locate the structure on the property, so we can move forward with $60,000 worth of engineering for, prior to the planning board approval. That's what we're asking for. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions about the project, if you have them.
What I'm hearing is, besides the building, the structure will also include an elevated or leveled parking zone. And that's going to be to this retaining wall issue that the Herbst is talking about.
I see, yes. I can help, help you understand that a bit. So if you're familiar, Mr. Andy Cool spoke earlier, if you're familiar with that property, they have a flat parking lot and, and then a fence in the same location. And I've asked our engineers to put together a similar structure, so we have a flat parking lot. And so while there is a retaining wall, there's ground fill and then a paved parking lot on top of it. So there will only be a small curb that appears on our property. And we do that to support the 100-year flood zoning issues and support all the engineering for water filtering that's underneath the parking lot. And we do that to improve the site.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience seeking for or against?
Hi, Paul. This is Bill Crenshaw, Monkeybird Lane. I had a question about the west, the Waltham edge of the building and the property line. Can the engineer bring up the other drawing? That shows the, the building shape and the parking strip? So I was just looking at that. It looks like there's a couple of emergency exit doors along the property line on the Waltham Street side. And I'm just trying to figure out if there's enough room for them to be functional, especially if the property on the Waltham Street side, like built up fence. Is there an easement or something that will allow that emergency access to always be usable?
There's four feet on that side of the building, which allows for the required landing space. So if, if a fence were to be built down the lot line in between there, it would make it such that the alley would not be usable, at least not out to Powder Mill Road for vehicles. And the doors would still be accessible, because there's four feet there between the building and the, and the property line.
All right. So not hearing any other comments from the public right now, I'm thinking that us zoning board folks ought to deliberate and see what we can come up with, what our options are on this particular petition. You, is zoning board people agree?
Yeah, I do. And, and I don't think that we should close the hearing until we talk for a few minutes, because if we do decide to continue, then we wouldn't be able to do that. So yeah, let's just chat if we can.
Okay.
May I speak briefly on something before we leave or before you chat? Hello?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to request that if you could have a site visit in relation to the property, the proposed area, so that at least you kind of understand the site area. So that would be very helpful.
And that's, that's a very good point. We have done that in the past, but with this, what do you call it, remote system that we're trying to be safe and healthy and all that, I just hadn't even considered it. But you do raise a very good point.
I think everybody could wear a mask and social distance. I think it's a, it's a, probably a good idea before you make any decisions. That's my recommendation.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So Marilyn, did you want to say anything at this point?
Yeah, I do. I always want to say something. So a couple of things. First of all, you know, site visits are always a good, good idea. However, you know, the, what we're supposed to be deciding is, is the structure, the proposed structure, any more non-conforming or more detrimental than what's there? So, you know, it's good to see the site, but we are talking about the structure and in terms of the size and, and the proposal that's been put forward to us. So that's one, one thing, just to kind of get back on track a little bit. But then there was the whole issue that we are in determining whether it is, you know, more detrimental or not. We're supposed to look at things like traffic and parking, which we can't really do, because we don't know what that's going to look like until the planning board grants whatever they grant. I also have a question about the retaining wall. Paul, you mentioned that the retaining wall is a structure. Is that a structure according to our bylaws? I don't have them in front of me, and I would just like to know from someone who knows that.
I would suggest if it takes an engineer to put it together, it's a structure.
Okay, so then in your mind, that they're actually adding a structure in addition to altering or replacing what's there? So you are looking at it as a separate structure that they want to add on the site?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just asking the question, because, because I, you know, to me, a retaining wall is a retaining wall. It's not, I don't know. And it's, is that in our bylaws anymore about whether that is considered, Bill?
I've got the definition of structure right here. Would you like me to read it?
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. A combination of materials assembled to give support or shelter, such as buildings, towers, masts, sheds, roofed storage areas, mechanical equipment, swimming pools, signs, fences, but not including septic tanks, septic systems, facilities associated with the provision of utilities such as drains, wells, transformers, telephone poles. So, yeah, materials assembled to give support or shelter. So.
Yes, given support of your parking lot.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not shelter, but it is going to give support.
Support.
Right. If you're going to raise that parking lot, it's going to need to, yeah, support.
Yeah. So do they need to submit something for that, too? Or we wouldn't, we wouldn't be approving that part of it then, because that's not what's in front of us tonight. What's in front of us this evening is a building.
I think, I think we're going to have to get clarification on the definition. And, you know, if, if retaining walls fit into that from Rick, the building commissioner, zoning agent. So I can shoot him a message and see if he can weigh in on that for the next.
What are you thinking, Paul, about going forward? You know, do we sign this subject to the planning board approving? Or do we continue and they can, you know, do their thing and have it subject to us approving? And then we know what we're looking at, very much like what happened with the Coolidge School. It's very similar.
I, I am reluctant, because of, you know, the questions that have been raised about the adjacent structure as to the whole package that we would be approving.
Right.
And so I, I can't, in good faith, you know, give an opinion at this point for just a building, when specifically it's a building for retail use in a congested part of town, with now a redesigned parking lot, rather than just, you know, putting new asphalt on the ground that's there now. I didn't realize they were going to get rid of that slope that's showing in the map.
I didn't either.
Then it seems like we need to continue until those things are clarified. And until we have some more information that actually looks like a plan, showing how that's all going to work together, then we know what we're signing off on or what we're granting.
Perhaps it would help the applicant board if we, if they had a sense of the board's general disposition towards the project and, and, and subject to the traffic playing out. So in other words, if the traffic is proven that it works, is that something, is there, are there other things that the board feels would, would impact their decision for the reconstruction of a non-conforming use? And just to be clear, also, you're not, the reconstruction is not for a retaining wall. Reconstruction is simply for what, like Marilyn said, what was there.
Right.
In the application.
But that's not the whole story of what they're building on site. It's only part of it.
That's correct. I mean, there's.
So we need, we would need a determination as to whether they need to come back again and ask to be able to put a second structure on that lot. If, if in fact the retaining wall is considered a structure, and I, I don't have the answer to that.
I'm not positive. I don't want to speak out of turn. We'll check that. I have a feeling if there's, it's a height issue, but I can't recall exactly. I think it was eight feet becomes a structure, but I, I don't want to speak out of turn for that.
Yeah, so I think, you know, again, we, we don't know. And, and, you know, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea. I think the co-op's a good idea. I think they need a building. I think that the building that's there is pretty awful looking. And presumably, they're going to put up something that's going to be an improvement, you know? So it's all good stuff, but we need to know what we're signing off on. And clearly, there are questions.
Bill, I think the definition of a structure could be resolved by your town council as opposed to somebody who's already interpreting the bylaws for his needs.
Right.
Okay, we can, we can, we can check the town council on that as well. Absolutely.
Because from where I work, when I actively gone to work, we have a lot of engineering studies with retaining walls. And some of them are huge. But a retaining wall is a designed structure. But a retaining wall is a designed structure. And if it fails, watch out for the folks downhill. So you need to get the real definition. I think town council will be a better shot for that.
I will, I'm doing it as we speak.
And so it, it, it sounds like, unless, you know, John Page, Jerry, if, if you have anything to say, I, I think Marilyn is suggesting a continuance.
That's correct.
I agree with that.
Yeah, Jerry here, I agree too, just like we did with, with Coolidge.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got to wait.
So I guess we would need a motion and also some sort of a realistic date to continue till, you know, would next month do it? Or what are we looking at?
Bruce, when, when were you thinking about submitting to the planning board?
As soon as we physically have possible to make the submission, we've got several things that we're working on right now with the architects, with the applicant, with a couple other sub consultants. So I don't have a specific date for you right now. I would suggest maybe that, you know, once we even get a date with it and the whole submission is in, it's going to take a little while for your peer review consultants to go through the traffic study and all that. I don't want to go way out, but I don't want to crystal ball it either. So maybe we choose your next month and prior to that time, we let you know if we need another continuance and we'll continue it to a subsequent meeting. And you can post whether we're continuing or not, you know, prior to that meeting. So abutters and interested parties don't have to sit through the evening. Is that fair?
Sounds good. Sounds good to me.
Just taking a look at the calendar, that would be the next meeting in November would be November 23rd.
How does that run into Thanksgiving? Well, if it's a Monday night, I guess it doesn't matter that much.
Yeah, that is the week of Thanksgiving, but I think it is scheduled still as the, you know, sitting ZBA meeting for that month.
Sure.
So I would like.
You know, I'll be here.
I would like to have a motion for that continuance to vote it on.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for, Bill, I don't have it in front of me, can you just fill in the address and the name of the applicant?
26 Powder Mill Road, the Assabit Co-op Market.
Right, propose that the, make a motion that the hearing be continued until the next ZBA meeting on November, whatever the date is.
22nd.
20 sec, 23rd.
Second, Jerry here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sounded like everybody.
We thank you for your time this evening, and we'll be in touch in advance of the 23rd so that you know where we stand.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Bruce.
Now, before the zoning board people go away, we got a couple of minutes to approve.
Yes. Yeah.
Can I just thank everyone for giving us the time to be heard? I appreciate that.
You're very much welcome, and I appreciate your feedback. I, I was not aware of the retaining wall and those kind of issues. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's why we suggested a visit to see the site.
Yes, very good idea.
And Mr. and Mrs. Herbst, you could always, it might be a good idea to reach out to my office sometime in the next couple of days, Katie or I, and maybe we can, we can coordinate some stuff and maybe we can all work together and figure out something there. But you know.
Appreciate it.
Right, you know how to get ahold of me on there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
No, no problem, anytime.
So as far as meeting minutes, we have one from May 11th.
Like a century ago at this point.
Yeah, that was, I kind of, I kind of crashed and burned with that last meeting. I had to load it up. So that, that one's on me. This is the correct minutes.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 11, 2020, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Who, who was the second on that, if you don't mind me asking?
Was it Jerry?
I think it was me, Jerry.
Okay.
The guy with the palm trees.
That's me, palm trees and the waves behind me.
Makes me happy, I like looking at them.
And then we have another one here, August 24th. Any, any issues with this one? Can we get a motion to approve this one?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 24th meeting of the ZBA.
There is a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Alan passes two.
We are up to date with our minutes.
Yes.
Good job, Bill.
So the next item on our agenda is something called adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
We're all in favor, yeah. Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks.
Good meeting tonight, good meeting.